It being six thirty, I think we should call the meeting to order. First order of business is pledge of allegiance. Everybody please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Trustee Eifert, here. Trustee Frank. Trustee Abeglin.
Here.
President Lenz.
Here.
Trustee Doorward.
Here.
Trustee Seering.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. The next order of business is presentations. And I think we hand that off to the administrator. The president to take the oath of office?
Of course. So first up, we have the administration of the oath of office for Peter Lenz is our village president. Come on up.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Peter Lenz.
I, Peter Lenz.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
But have not yet entered on the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered on the duties thereof.
Swear.
Swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
So. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Hi.
And next up, we'd like to welcome up Don Doorward.
You're like a game show host. Michelle, I have that form for you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Donald Doorward. Having been elected to the office of village trustee. But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof. Swear. That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God. So, congratulations, Don.
And last but certainly not least, DJ Seering.
Give me photo opportunity. All right, you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, DJ Seering. Having been elected to the office of village trustee. But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Yet, not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear.
Swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States. And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin. And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
Faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right. The next item on the agenda, items for action and or discussion, the first item, selection and appointment by the board of trustees of the village president pro temp. Are there any nominations or discussion about? Who will act as village president in my absence? Don, are you interested in being president pro temp? Do we have a motion? All right, do we have a second? All right, all in, do we have a discussion?
Any other nominations?
And, oh, any other nominations for president pro temp? Well then, I'll call the question, all in favor of Don Doorward as president pro temp? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Right. Congratulations. The next item, motion to approve appointment to the village officers as presented in the packets. We've all had an opportunity to take a look at the packet, village officers. Was there any discussion? Regarding the village officers, anything that needs to be brought to the board's attention? No? Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other discussions? Then I'll call the question, all in favor of approving the appointment of the village officers, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Third item, discussion and possible action on appointment of village trustees, citizens and other appointees to various boards, committees and commissions as recommended by the village president. There is a list of these also in the packet. If people have had a chance to take a look at it, are there any, is there any discussion about assignments to the various boards, committees? Et cetera. Now discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the appointments? As listed?
I can make a motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Then I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? And? That would be the end of this organizational meeting, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
And the meeting is adjourned. It being seven o'clock, I think it is time to call the meeting to order. First order of business is pledge of allegiance, stand.
Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Trustee Eifert, here. Trustee Frank. Trustee Abeglin.
Here.
President Lenz.
Here.
Trustee Doorward.
Here.
Trustee Seering.
Here.
All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment, I will remind folks that public comment is limited to five minutes, this is a point in time when you can talk to the board, speak your piece. Is there anybody interested in public comment? I'll take that as a no. The next item is the consent agenda, approving the minutes of the March twentieth and April third, twenty twenty-five village board of trustees meetings. Do I have a motion to approve? Hmm? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, both of them, and approve the general fund, water and sewer invoices. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, March twentieth and April third, twenty twenty-five.
And the general fund and sewer.
And water and sewer.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, I'll put the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes. All right, the next item is report on village committees. We have one report from the Parks and Recreation Committee from trustee Eifert.
We are still working diligently on. Planning for the fund before the fourth. Our next meeting will be April twenty-eighth at seven P M. And we'd like to thank Friends of Fredonia, they are going to sponsor us. In getting that connect for. The bounce houses. The duck tank.
Very nice.
So I thought that, yeah, it is very nice for them to offer to help out with those items. But we've been working on just getting the flyer ready for. The parade.
Right.
That's.
That's pretty much it?
That's pretty much it, right? I mean, it's just, is everything still just kind of planned away? So come on out then, people. It's Monday night, seven P M, right here. Want to help out?
Thank you. Now we have report on operations of the village, the first report is by the village president. I don't have a lot to report since this is my first day on the job, so. However, I would like to thank the DPW, the people who put in the brand new sign in the village, we've got a nice new welcome sign for the village. That they managed to put in in a very quick and clean way, it looks great. I'd also like to note that the business of the month is Tom and Jody's Fredonia Inn, we went over there today and talked to them and got some information from them. Had a very nice visit and ordered dinner from them because they, they make pretty good food. I look forward to the next two years, working for the village, trying to make this an even better place to live, and I guess that's about it for my report, I don't have anything much this, this first time around, my apologies. All right, the next item is for the village administrator.
Sure, not bad for day one, right?
Yeah.
We did it. Um, well, my, my report's a little long-winded, but I'll try to just give you a summary here. Uh, we continue to research the residential housing incentive program, uh, we got an update from PMRE on the Stony Creek lots, so in case you guys didn't see that. Um, they submitted five years of data to the D N R. In the hopes that the D N R can review in the next three to six months and then give us a green light to actually develop those properties, which will be really exciting for all of us. Our commercial inspector Roger Kisan announced his retirement, uh, he's been working for us for over a decade now, we asked him how long it's been and he couldn't remember, so that's how long it's been. Uh, but he's helping us transition, uh, we have a couple of leads out there now on inspectors that could possibly step in, and so we look forward to bringing that to you soon, we obviously got a busy summer with a lot of projects, so we need somebody to do those inspections. Um, speaking of which, uh, I was joking with President Lenz, uh, for those that were following our plan commission meetings, they've been pretty slow over the last, uh, you know, two years under, uh, President Gurkey's term. But, but our first, first plan commission meeting with President Lenz, we have at least, uh, three site plans that are coming before the plan commission, all for the industrial park, so that's really exciting news. Um, another side note, uh, I talked to the realtor, uh, we have Guyan O'Neil, those properties up there, uh, and they have at least five different vendors that are interested, they've walked through the buildings. And would like to, uh, possibly rent or lease or buy that space, so that's certainly promising to hear as well. Um, the timeline for the industrial park, uh, we could see the finish line coming soon, the We Energies is expected to be installed in the next one to two months, at least by the end of May. On the grinder pumps that we had talked about in the past, those will be installed by mid-May, and then paving is scheduled ideally by early June, a lot of it is weather dependent, right? When these concrete plants open up, uh, but we're hopeful we'll get all that done by midsummer. Um, and then big congrats to our previous, uh, business of the month, March, uh, we got to tour Divine Savior, we had a good time, President Gurkey and I, learning about just the history of that building, and of course, hanging out with kids, that's the best, best way to spend a day. Um, we had, have successfully implemented the sewer rate increases that we have discussed and approved in the past, got all those notices sent out and then handled inquiries as they came in. Uh, Treasurer Upson and I, um, met with Baker Tilly to finalize our audit items, um, got that all set up, they sent us drafts of those documents that we've reviewed, and then we're planning on meeting with them shortly as well. We also have been meeting with our insurance providers, um, in order to, uh, re-up that policy, and then, uh, we'll keep you updated when that comes due, uh, probably in June. Um, Clark Johnson's been reviewing the assessment role, overall, we saw an increase in values to the north with Hillcrest lots being reclassified from agricultural to residential. Um, so that'll be at least a decent change, that'll increase the overall value of the village. Uh, Director Paulus and I, we met with, uh, Safe Step, if you remember, that's the company that we hired last year to begin the sidewalk maintenance program. So they're going to be starting with Martin Drive along that main thoroughfare where a lot of kids walk to and from school. And, uh, even for the small amount of money that we put into our budget, they're going to be able to look at that entire stretch of sidewalk, um, to make sure that that is, uh, a safe passage for their students. Let's see here, moving on, uh, want to give a congrats to Rick Raybuck, he's also retiring, he's our longtime DPW guy here, um, well-deserved retirement, nearly thirteen years with the village. Um, we send him our best wishes, and then we recently hired, uh, Mr. Simon, Simon, which I'm sure Eric can share a little bit about him when he gets to his report. Um, Marshall's office has been handling plenty of calls that he can talk about. Uh, we've been receiving bids on the two internal capital projects that we have approved, so the Marshall's Office roof replacement. And then the fire department build out, so you'll see those, when we get those in by the end of this month, by the first meeting in May, you should have those in front of you to approve as well. Well, let's see, we've talked about, uh, Parks and Rec, we continue to work on the open, the Parks and Open Space Plan. Um, Director Paulus is working on a list of really just park items, there's a lot of things like equipment, playground stuff that we'd like to see updated, so he's working on that list in order to prioritize. Which projects are important, match them with our open space planning, and then really just utilize our little dollars that we have in order to improve those spaces. Uh, spring election was obviously a success, so congratulations to our newly elected individuals there. Uh, we hosted a little government one-on-one, uh, our trustee Seering and President Lenz, and then Hal Steffen from the school board, uh, joined us to learn just how our village operates, and that's always a fun time. Uh, we sent out our newsletter, uh, we compiled that with our sewer notices and our billing in order to really make sure that everybody was getting that communication all the same. At the same time, and also, of course, saved us dollars to send that together too, so that worked out really well, I'll give a huge shout out to Treasurer Upson, who literally spent a weekend folding those by herself. Um, so thank you to her. Um, Clark Johnson's been working on the Policies and Procedures Handbook, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And then finally, yeah, I'll echo, uh, what trustee Eifert had said, we've been receiving some phenomenal donations for all of our events, it's continued to roll in. Um, we're really excited to see, you know, all these events come to fruition, we started advertising, um, Tuesday tunes, Madonia's starting to pick up with registrations, I'm looking forward to a really fun summer. And then last but not least, we had a meeting with our contractors for the PWSB Splash Zone, believe it or not, that's actually gonna come to fruition, we're gonna get it constructed. Um, setting off an email today about signage, um, so if all goes well, you know, late spring here, early summer, we'll have a nice fun asset that we all, we all can splash in, it'll be great, so. All right, that's enough for me, thank you.
Thank you. Our next report is from Marshal Leet.
Good evening, um, in your packet, you should have had my usual report in regards to that. If items of interest for this month, uh, first off, our office did acquire a grant through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Uh, the toxology section for some additional equipment. Uh, the first piece of equipment we got from them was a new portable breath test unit. This is a small handheld device that we use during the course of our field spraying and testing. Although we do have two units already to coincide with our two squads, they are older. And these, and, and there is a finite lifetime on these pieces of equipment, so this gives us capability, uh, to replace one of those. For the inevitability that they are, are no longer serviceable. Uh, more importantly, we also received, uh, equipment needing to test and calibrate these BBT units. Uh, including the new dry gas standard. Uh, the past, we've had to rely on the, uh. Other agencies to do our calibration and testing of our units. For us, with this equipment, uh, we are able to do that ourselves. So we can make sure that they receive the proper amount of maintenance and upkeep, uh, that we require. Uh, I received training from our local representative from the Department of Wisconsin. About three weeks ago, and I'm all certified to, uh, to conduct testing of these. Uh, secondly, uh, saga continues, Deputy Burns, uh, had a bit of setback in that, uh, workman's compensation. Uh, asked for another six weeks of, uh. Physical therapy. Uh, this came as a surprise to all of us, as in my experience, workman's compensation usually tries to get you off of the program as quickly as possible, not keep you off. Uh, but they felt the need that, uh, and we're not, we're not gonna question that, uh, to keep him on physical therapy for another six weeks, so. It's starting out of the department, it's probably gonna be the end of this one, the early next one. Uh, he is, I can tell you, he is dashing at the bit, he's gone stir crazy, uh, he can't wait to get up here. You know, he's excited to get up, and of course, return to his old department, but, so. I'm, I'm sure he's more excited to get up here. Um, for that, any questions?
Um, yeah, I noticed that we're, we're up to current numbers in, in twenty twenty-two. And, uh, usually it takes like, tell about. Almost two months sometimes to get to previous year books. I was wondering when they're gonna get yourself up on there.
Well, I have not received, uh, twenty twenty-four's numbers yet from the board, as you pointed out, it's, uh, it's usually dependent upon that, so, um. When I get twenty twenty-four's numbers, it should have everything from the previous years as well. So, um, if you'd mind, I can acquire that, I can see if they can send that to me separately. But, uh, it does usually take a good six months for me to split or to, uh, to fully finish their accounting processes to get those numbers out.
Well, don't do anything special, you're far enough behind.
That's all right.
Don't do anything special, Eric, far enough behind already, you know, I'll get yous.
Yeah, they will, they will, okay.
Well, thank you, Marshal Leet.
Thank you.
And, uh, the next person on the list would be Chief Waker. But I don't believe Chief Waker's here, Chief Waker's notes are in the packet, if you're interested, we'll move on. Public works, that would be Director Paulus.
Yeah, my package, the only thing I left out, because it happened on March thirty-first, was, we did a meter reading. Uh, when I first started, it was a tweet process, and we had it, uh, in less than two days.
Very nice. Any questions for Director Paulus? All right, uh, the village clerk, what time? Sorry, that's after.
Uh, so we had an election. Um, our team of election inspectors processed nine hundred and eighty voters. It's a sixty-four percent turnout, I was expecting eight hundred, um, and this is almost a record-breaking, um, election. So that was really exciting. Um, there were no significant election day issues to report, returns to the county were made with no issues, reconciliation is complete, certificates of election were issued. Um, I attached the Ozaki County election results for those interested. And the local results are, um, for village president, um, Peter Lenz with four hundred and fifty-one votes. Eric Stoll with three fifty-five. Village trustee, DJ Seering, five sixteen. Peter Lenz, three eighty-nine, Donald Doorward, five sixty-one, and Jackie Burmish, ten. Um, alcohol licensing is upon us, um, no major changes in statute from last year, uh, which was a very transitional year. Um, my, the packets are all put together and I'll send them out on Monday. Um, the assessment role came in, um, I'm comparing it like we did last year, property by property to, um, identify any unexplained irregularities. Um, the open book is scheduled for April twenty-eighth, um, the border review is May nineteenth at five. We will need to fit in a joint training, um, with the town of Fredonia, um, especially because we have new B O R members. Um, at some point, um, and just a reminder, manufacturing is assessed by the state and we will be waiting for those values until midsummer, at least. Um, most of this week was spent, um, preparing for the organizational meeting, um. Policies and procedure manual is, we're talking about that later tonight, the newsletter is done, we mailed it out with, um, the notice of the sewer rate increase and, um, water bills. Um, there's a bunch of meetings coming up that we're working on packets for, especially the plan commission, um, utility payments are coming in, and building permits are picking up with the warmer weather.
Any questions for the clerk? Thank you very much. Uh, we have a report now from Treasurer Upton.
Okay, so the normal tasks, I've kind of, you know, gotten used to that under my belt, so that's going very smoothly now with, you know, the payroll, you know. Even the quarterly, you know, sewer water billing, and you know, my second time around went really well. Um, as Eric said, we got it done lately in two days, I mean, we read the meters that Monday morning, and I was actually ready to print everything up as we were doing elections, but.
It was too fast, Julie.
It is, you know, I couldn't quite print them that right that soon, but everything went really great and smooth, so that was awesome. Um, as Chris mentioned, uh, he and I met with Wendy, with Baker Tilly. There's some. Banal sheet type items that I need to get over to her to try to get some backup on that, um, there's some balances from many years ago. From auditor entries and all that, that, you know, I want to try to get resolved, cleaned up. This was the last year of our contract with them. I know Chris and I have talked that we would like to, uh, get other offers for audit. Firms, you know, besides Baker Tilly, just to see, um, you know, just based on the bills that we've been getting and what the contract was, and my prior experiences with the private industry. In my opinion, I think it's quite high, um, what they're charging. And from what I'm seeing with the, the work and just the interaction. I guess I would have expected a little higher quality, but, you know, it's my first go-round with government, so I'm, you know, not sure if it's just how government works or overall, but, um. You know, being our last year with the contract, it would, I think it would be, you know, our due diligence to see what else is there, um, just like as we're doing with, uh, the, the insurances. And then the other thing that's starting to take up a bunch of my time is the state insurance programs that we run under the E T S. Um, they're launching a brand-new website that'll be kicking in on July first. Um, there's been some work that I've had to do to make sure that our participants' information is in there correctly and all that, and there's going to be. Like five different training sessions that I'll have to, you know. You know, do that almost like almost a weekly basis, and then each session is two hours long, so it's gonna be a lot of training, and then. Um, I'll have to then turn around and train all the people that are on it, because then they will actually be able to go into that new website and maintain their own. And any, you know, like new employees or something, they would go in there to, um, basically onboard themselves with what insurances they want to have with their choices and all that kind of stuff, so. It's a lot of learning that I'll have to do and make sure that everything is good for the, the whole life of that, along with all the state people that will be assisting. So that is everything I have right now. And, and I guess I did get fully trained with all the election, and I did help out with that, so that was fun.
Thank you.
Any questions for the treasurer? Thank you very much. Onto the Ozaki County District Two supervisor, uh, Ms. Paff. Onto the Ozaki County District Two Supervisor, Ms. Pappy, who is not here. So we will continue on Mid Moraine Municipal Association Designated Representative. That's Don Dorwart, Trustee Dorwart.
Yeah, I have a three period to have a full report and the next board meeting. There's a hard point, which isn't extensive, but there's very much pertinent information in it. Has to do a lot with social and, and health wasn't something like that. So I figured that would be valuable that people can, if they want, copy that off. Or just use that information. So it's, it's handed to them. I will be reporting next, next month.
All right. Thank you very much. And that takes us to items for action and or discussion. First item for discussion is discussion and possible action on village trustee vacancy. Administrator Jenkins?
Sure. So as we know, we are one person short after the election. We have a vacancy of our six-member Board of Trustees. We only have five of you. So when you deal with the vacancy, the board has, well, yes, I know seven. I'm not counting, not counting the village president.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So we, you have three options when there's a vacancy. One, you can hold it open, which obviously this is a long two years. We wouldn't recommend you do that. You can hold a special election, which again would, would probably be a costly effort for us to take, but you certainly could do that. Or the board has the option to appoint somebody. So those who've been on the board of the past, you've probably gone through this process once or twice. If you go through the appointment process, we'd recommend us obviously put out that messaging, say that there's a vacancy. Invite people to submit letters of interest, resumes, whatever kind of things that you guys are looking, looking for. And then we'd invite those candidates back to our next meeting, which would be May first. With the goal of you guys interviewing them and making and deliberating and making your decision. I just want to remind you all that this must be done in an open session. You cannot go into closed session. It's not like you're hiring somebody, right? Everything happens out in the public, the interview, the questions, the deliberation, and then ultimately the vote of who you choose. So that's my summary and I'll let you guys discuss amongst yourself what you want to do.
I don't, I don't believe state statute seventeen dot twenty-four provides for a special election. It says that any vacancy, uh, village board must be either left vacant or appointed by a majority of the board. So special election out of all. And I wouldn't recommend maybe to go more than a year or a year.
Oh, yeah.
I agree. I think appointing, having, having people apply with interest and appointing somebody after due consideration makes sense. Any other discussion?
So what, so we can put out that messaging. We're prepared to do that as of tomorrow, right away on social media, website, email blast. What would you like those applicants to provide to you all?
Fifteen minute speech, song and dance.
A ten-page assessment they have to fill out. Yeah.
Resume and a letter of interest or intent?
Some to give us some, some background. Who they are, why they want to be here.
All right. So a general letter of interest. If they want to include their resume, they can. They don't have to.
Love, love resume if they have.
Yep. Sounds good. And then just based on the calendar, I mean, we don't meet again until, like I said, that May first. So that gives two full weeks for anybody to apply that's interested. And then obviously we'd invite all those people to attend that May first meeting. So you can review those, those letters of interest, ask questions of them. And then that night they would get appointed if you guys so chose. Then we can take one big group happy picture together. So. Sound like plan?
Any debate?
Yeah. I, I believe we should probably come to a consensus rather than a motion on this.
Yep.
Census.
Yep.
From the voices that we heard tonight, it sounds like we have that consensus.
Any debate, any discussion? Yes, I agree. All right.
Sounds great. Get it going.
Do it.
One question. Is that something that somebody might be able to attend remotely? I mean, as far as board member? Is that, that we can still vote on?
To, to vote on that? Like saying if you, like if you're out of town, if you're able to vote on it? Yeah. Let's check with Clerk Johnson.
Yeah, we sure can. We do have a policy in our privacy and procedures handbook that has already been adopted that would, yeah, that would provide you an opportunity to participate remotely. It changes our process a little bit.
And it means I can't get that group picture that night. I was all playing, playing it. That's okay. Next meeting.
We're going to do that following meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great.
All right. I think we have a general consensus. Any discussion? All right. The next item is a motion to approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty-five, number seven. Authorizing village president Peter Lenz as a signatory on village issued checks and documents. Do we have a second? Any discussion?
You'll be signing a lot more than church.
It's okay. The arthritis is under control. All right. Well, then I'll put the question to you. All in favor? By all opposed? Motion passed. Now we have the introduction of policies and procedure manual. This is something that Administrator Jenkins is going to tell us about.
Sure. Well, I've been teasing this pretty much all spring. I want to give a huge shout out to Clerk Johnson. She spent a lot of time going through all of our records and files. Pulling out old policies, you know, random things that probably were lost on shelves for quite a long time. And helped to bring all those together to this new book that you see before you. So some of them are word for word what they were before. Some of them clean, been cleaned up a little bit and some of it additions that we have recommended to you. Tonight is just a first glance. We're going to take it just like we would at ordinance where we'll just briefly introduce it to you. You guys could take it home, read through it. And then the next meeting that we can discuss more. So just highlighting some of the, the new additions that we have in there. We have our key access policy that governs who has access with our keys. We have our tablet use policy. So that sets in, in, in place clear expectations when it comes to village-owned property, like those tablets that you guys get to take home and use. And what's the expectation of use of those tablets and then bringing them back? Social media policy, this is becoming more and more popular in a lot of communities that utilize social media. Obviously we do as well. So we didn't, certainly did not reinvent the wheel. We copied and pasted from another community that had been vetted with their attorneys. And we did the same with ours. And we feel like this is a good or a proper policy that both protects the first amendment rights, obviously that people have on their, whatever communication devices that they choose to use, while at the same time being able to at least have some control over what we utilize on a day-to-day basis. We have our code of conduct. So the code of conduct is another one that we sold from a couple like-sized municipalities. Just talks about what are the expectations? How are we going to get along with each other? There's going to be plenty of times where we're all going to get along. There's probably going to be times where we're going to be in a disagreement and what are going to be the ground rules, right? To make sure we have that passionate discourse that we get to have. Same thing with village board, village administrator relations. We've now developed this relationship over the last three years. That helps to codify what those best practices have been over the last three years down on paper. And then finally, we have updates to the remote attendance and recordings of meetings, as was mentioned. Adding the, adding the process by which that we encourage obviously open use of communication. We record our meetings and we really incentivize that. Everything that we do is going to be out of the, in the open. Let me just make sure I got everything else here. I'll look at Clerk Johnson. Did I miss anything in my summary?
I just want to say that we did take some things out.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
So the, that we have a water tower access policy that we probably need to revisit if the Tower Point stuff is approved. But because this had already been approved by you, we included it. But we did take out a portion about the mental health of contractors. Because we would not have any way to assess that or enforce it. And then we also chose to not include the legal access policy that was in place from many, many moons ago. I'm not sure why this was in place. It seems like maybe somebody was getting their hands slapped for some reason. But it doesn't seem prudent to report every communication that we have with our village attorney in an open session. And so we decided to leave that one out. And I, you know, we put this document together as something that's easy to edit. So if we can take anything out, we can put anything in. This is your document. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So we, I'm sorry, I'll see in procedure manual. It looks like it's finally coming to life.
Oh.
Yep. Finally got there.
Know that was a priority for you.
About the last eight years.
Awesome. Well, I think that it will help us in the long run. I mean, I, I think this is a good starting point, but you know, we've had so much turnover in the last five years. Having all of this in one location and an easy to access, easy to understand and easy to edit document, I think is going to be useful for us as a staff and for your next staff and your next board. I think this is a good starting point. So.
Yeah, it's function about the same as a fee schedule. You can change fees and stuff without having to, you know, an ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that kind of stuff isn't important enough to be, I mean, as temporary stuff is not important enough to be in an ordinance. But a procedure or costume manual will retain all that stuff and you can make your adjustments easily.
I agree.
All right.
So there's no other feedback. I just encourage you guys to take it home, read through it, ask questions, and then we'll discuss more in the next meeting.
Sounds good. The next item is a motion to approve intergovernmental cooperation agreement for law enforcement mutual aid in Ozaki County. I think Administrator Jenkins, do you have something to say about that?
Let me actually look. Marshal Leet, are you confident enough to talk about this at all?
General.
Yeah. Yep.
I will say this. Say for agency here, you know, the part-time agency here. And we are working, it depends only on a few of us at the time. So the time is there to do this work. Of course, the time is just one of us. If you get anything like a domestic situation like that, we rely heavily on other agencies, typically the sheriff's department. But it could be graphic, it could be soft. This is a county-wide inter-agency agreements that allows all of us to share resources. And in a county our size, where, where we don't necessarily have the large departments. That, that's crucial to what we do. I've been, I've been, when I've been up here, I've been as far away as assisting the county, but all over in Belgium. You know, or down in soccer, the graphic, down in port. Likewise, those agencies have been up here assisting. So it is, it is kind of integral to what we do, especially in the county stage.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or debate? All right. I'll ask the question. All that approve?
Aye.
Aye. All that oppose? The motion is passed. Next item is correspondence. This is for the clerk.
No correspondence.
No correspondence. Items for future consideration. Does anybody on the board have any items for future consideration?
Motion adjourned.
Do I have a second? Do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The medium is adjourned.